Good morning. Call this meeting to order, and please roll call. Could we get a motion to excuse Commissioner Fitzpatrick?
It's been moved.
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded to excuse Commissioner Chair Fitzpatrick. Please vote. That passes unanimously. Do we have any follow-up items from the earlier workshops this week? So we'll go ahead with Mr. Gentry with the emergency management.
Good morning, Vice Chair, Commissioners, and Manager. Pleased to be here, and I will say at the beginning and I'll say at the end, thank you for your continued support of emergency management and all the things that we do for the citizens in the county, and most very appreciative of everything that you've allowed us to move forward on and accomplish. So I am going to listen to Commissioner Mary Perkins-Williams. I'm gonna have a few words, but I'll be glad to answer any question and additional information you may need, so I'm gonna get started. We just want to point out a few accomplishments from the fire service over the past year. We've had four different departments that have had the state inspection meeting that the requirements set forth by the state. So Belvoir, Carolina Township, Gardnersville, and Sharp Point met those standards. And then, just so for your awareness, and I'm sure you already know, but over the last year, Eastern Pines moved into a new station, and they'll be having open house on the 15th for that station. And Faulkland Fire Department established a substation on 43 North, and that really helps the residents in their tax rating by having that station there, so just wanted to point that out. This year, or this coming next budget year, we have four different fire departments that are asking for a fire district tax increase, and they've had their needs, anything from just operational costs that have increased up into, including purchase of a new equipment and paying for staff. So those are what those requests are for. Wanted to point out some of the major accomplishments of last year for EMS. Back in September, you approved the funds for us to order four different, four more EMS trucks in the coming year. Those orders were placed in September. We are told as recent as yesterday, we're still expecting the delivery of those four trucks the first of June, so just be looking for those new pieces of equipment that you helped us put on the road. Just wanted to bring to your attention that our community paramedic program does an outstanding job in the community. We need more, but along with their regular duties in assisting the community over the last year because of the pandemic, they were also very beneficial in helping get the boosters. For those people that were not able to go somewhere to a provider or one of our clinics to get those booster shots, Community Paramedic was made aware of where those people live and went to their home to give them those shots. So it's a great program, and we want to continue to emphasize how much they do for our community. And then, of course, over the last two and a half years, or three, however you want to count it, emergency management has been tremendously involved in helping support the pandemic with public help in the response for the COVID-19. So I'm looking forward to not talking about COVID anymore, but just wanted to remind you that we played an integral part in making sure that people had resources they needed, whether it's coming from the state, federal government, or having to be sourced locally. We were assisting all of our partners. EMS budget. Last year, we were talking about the new software in our billing and some helping us to capture all that we needed to capture in our billing, making sure we were making accounting for everything that we were doing, and those collections have come in. And so moving forward, we're not asking for a tax increase in our EMS budget, maintaining where we are, but it's made possible because of that new software and the diligence of the finance office in doing those collections. What we are asking for in this year's budget, and the manager presented that on Monday night, and really did a fantastic job in laying out the needs and why and how come, but we are asking for one FTE in the finance area for billing to assist to continue to drive that EMS billing to make sure that we're capturing everything that we're due so that we can run a professional, well-equipped EMS agency. In addition, we are asking for four new FTEs to staff a peak time truck in our Chicot area. In the calendar year of 2021, six mile radius from that Chicot crossroads, there's 829 rescue calls. Currently, there is not a rescue unit established in that southern area, so when the call comes out, it would either be Eastern Pines, Winterville, Aiden, or Grifton. Well, when we take those trucks out of those heavily populated areas such as Eastern Pines, Winterville, Aiden, and Grifton to run to that Chicot area, we have to, you know, be mindful and make sure we have coverage in those other areas, but it just puts a strain on those current rescue units. So by establishing that Chicot truck, it keeps those trucks in those populated areas, more in those areas, but at the same time, we're able to cover the Chicot area, that 's southern Pitt County where it's growing rapidly. It allows us to respond and give better coverage to the citizens, has a better response time, and anytime we can get there quicker, it also helps have a better outcome to the patient. So we're asking for that. Pitt County Schools, like in the past, where we have the station in North Pitt, they have agreed to allow us to put a temporary staffing location there as a step one, just to get that unit established. It's a peak time truck. Right now, we're kind of looking at it from 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. That could change based on demands, but anyhow, I think that's a step in the right direction to provide that coverage to an area of the county that it's a long response time, and we don't want to take the trucks out of the heavily populated areas to leave that area. So that's the whole purpose of that. The workers' comp, there was a legislative action in 2021. They took a look at it, so we're not having to pay for our workers' comp premiums in the fiscal year 2023 and '24. Just a note, so you'll know that we're not having to spend that money in the coming year. About a year and a half ago, you Commissioners received a memo talking about a practice that had been going on for years about trying to help the volunteers when any time they were transported by EMS, we had taken care of the bill. Through some research and with the legal department, we realized that we probably shouldn't be doing that, and there was not a policy. So in trying to move forward to continue to recognize our volunteers and the fire service and our EMS personnel, we've established a fund within our budget that any portion of an EMS bill for a volunteer or a first responder that rides on our EMS system, any portion that's not paid by the insurance, we will take care of that. So that's what that fund is for, and we just think that's the right thing to do to continue to look after our first responders and firefighter volunteers. And then, for our contracted squads, last year, we established a tiered system, so we've just added that tier system to their budget this year to give them an increase for each of the contracted squads based on the number of calls that they run, and that will help them cover the increased costs as far as operational cost. So that's what we've done for the nonprofits this year. EM budget. We have four different fire departments requesting the $25,000 to help purchase vehicles, so we followed the established policy by the Commissioners in approving that, so Belvoir, Fountain, Pactolus, and Simpson will be ordering new trucks. And I am in keeping with Mary Perkins-Williams Commissioner and keeping it short. I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, yeah, and on behalf of the board and the citizens, thank you and your folks for such outstanding service and professional service.
Thank you, sir.
Questions or comments?
Thank you much.
Thank you.
Mr. Vice Chair, if I may, just to clarify for the board, who may already know this, those items that were requested on the third to the last slide are all included within the recommended budget and covered within the existing EMS tax.
So all asked are covered here?
Yes.
Yes, thank you, thank you, thank you for pointing that out.
I'd like to commend them on going to the homes where people could not get the booster. That sounds good. That would eliminate some of my concerns.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gentry.
Do we need a break?
No, we don't need a break.
Sheriff, are you ready to come on and present?
I see them out there.
Yeah, great, thank you. Good morning.
Good morning.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Morning Commissioners. All right. I think we are gonna start off with the Sheriff's Office side. I always refer to our agency as a house. Some people work on the outside of the house, that's the ones I'll start off with, and then we'll end up with the ones who work on the inside of the house as it relates to the detention center.
Pull your mic over just a little bit. Your mic, pull it kind of over to, there you go.
Okay. Can you hear me better now?
Yeah.
Yes, okay. All right. Mission. The mission of the Pitt County Sheriff's Office is to serve, protect, and defend the community with integrity and sound judgment in a manner respectful of the trust that has been placed upon us while preserving the rights and dignity of all. Our vision is to ensure the future quality of our citizens. The Pitt County Sheriff's Office set the standards in public safety through innovation and commitment while recruiting a dynamic workforce that meets the profile of the community. We will strategically plan and prepare for the future needs in law enforcement, detention services, and civil process. We believe in striving to be a good citizen and beneficial member of our community, state, and nation. It is our duty to serve mankind, to safeguard the lives and property of others, and to respect the constitutional rights of all. The badge is a symbol of public trust in obeying the laws of the land and the regulations of the Pitt County Sheriff's Office, and in supporting ongoing organizational change that strengthens our ability and capacity to serve. This next screen that you'll see is the hierarchy of the Pitt County Sheriff's Office side of the house. Some of the services that we provide is the Civil Process Unit, Communication Center, Community Impact, Court Services, Crime Analysis, Crime Scene Forensics, Criminal Investigations, Detention Center, Electronic Monitoring Unit, Narcotics, Support Services, Training and Standards Unit, Uniform Patrol, Victims Advocate. Our specialized services include Civil Disturbance Team, Crisis Negotiation Team, Honor Guard, and Special Response Team. Some other community services that we provide is building bridges, bully prevention workshops, Citizens Academy, Citizens on Patrol, Community Watch Programs, Cookies with Santa and the Sheriff, the Dare Program, National Night Out, Operation Medicine Drop, Pitt-Greenville Crime Stoppers, our Senior Check Program, our Senior Prom, Summer Camp, Teen Academy, Trunk or Treat, Volunteer Program, and Worship Security Training. So as you can see, we provide a lot of services in addition to our regular duties. Highlights. We've responded to more than 43,700 calls for service this year. We've performed more than 33,100 business checks, and we've created more than 9,600 reports documenting criminal activity. Our Part I property crimes are down 16%. Our Part II crimes are down 5%. Our sex offender registration. During fiscal year 2022, deputies conducted a minimum of four checks per sex offender. Additionally, we perform two mandated checks that require the offender report to our office and present their certified verification letter. As you can see, we have a total of 345 registered sex offenders here in the county. We've registered 37 new ones. We've arrested 39 on sex offender arrests, and those are arrests that come about when people are not reporting that they've moved or that they're living where they say they're living, those kind of violations. We've completed 339 validations, and we've sent out more than 545 verification letters. Our performance on CCW applications, if you'll look at the graph here. North Carolina general statutes require that the Sheriff's Office's process gun permit applications within 14 days. In July of 2021, our average application process was more than 98 days with approximately 1,400, I mean 1,400 applications in the queue. If you remember, at my request, the Board of County Commissioners approved three new positions to catch up and ultimately maintain statutory compliance. I am pleased to announce our gun permit application process is now within statute less than 14 days with only approximately 150 applications in the queue. So I appreciate you all working with me and providing those positions in order to enable me to meet my statutory requirements. Our budget highlights is the dual-purpose K-9, salary adjustments, sergeant position, night shift differential pay. To talk about the dual-purpose K-9, I am requesting $21,000 for a dual-purpose K-9. That amount includes a green dog, which is $8,500, and training for the dog and handler at $12,500. Dual-purpose K-9s are trained in patrol and narcotic detection. This would be a replacement for Banzai, who was medically retired this year. After our fiscal year 2023 budget request was submitted, my K-9 sergeant learned of a newly-trained dual-purpose dog at no cost. The dog was purchased and trained by a trusted vendor and returned by a small police department with funding issues. My K-9 sergeant is in the process of testing the dog for performance, safety reasons, but believe it to be capable of replacement for Banzai. So we can kind of hope that we're gonna get that dog, and I would be withdrawing my petition for that. Salary adjustments. Requesting $409,000 for salary adjustments, and the amount includes salary and benefits. Unfavorable variance by position for supervisors compared to Greenville Police Department. Sheriff, that would include sheriff, chief deputy, major, lieutenants, and sergeants. In February of 2020, the Sheriff's Office conducted a salary study comparing Pitt County Sheriff's Office to the Greenville Police Department. The study confirmed an unfavorable salary variance between supervisory personnel. To be exact, the total average salary variance by classification was 8.7%, and the total classification and pay variance by minimum salary was 8.2%. Supervisors at the Sheriff's Office and Detention Center throughout the state are tasked with much greater responsibilities than our peers employed by the police departments. Some of our additional duties consist of operation of detention centers, securities of courtrooms, service of civil process, concealed carry permits, handgun purchase permits, sex offender registration, and offender compliance checks. This, along with frequently providing or assisting with general law enforcement services, even within those municipalities that make more than we do. And it should equate to equal pay. Some examples of this is the assistance that we provide during the Collet Festival. We provide assistance to the Dogwood Festival, the Shad Festival, the Watermelon Festival, Halloween events downtown, and if you will remember more recently, the protests. It was all hands on deck by my agency to come out in support of the municipality of Greenville when the protest was going on. We stood side by side with officers who were making more than we did, or than we do, but we provided that support. With additional responsibilities, our deputies are, who are frequently called for assistance, make less than the officers that they come to provide support for. The street crimes, this is in reference to the sergeant position. The Street Crimes Squad currently consists of three investigators that proactively enforce general statutes involving street-level narcotics, gangs, and firearms. One of their secondary functions is educating others, especially employees of Pitt County's school system about current trends, identifiers, and dynamics of gangs. They currently share a sergeant with narcotics, which is incredibly difficult due to them having a completely different law enforcement, or having completely different law enforcement functions. The Street Crimes Squad has validated 80 Crip gang members and 70 blood gang members within Pitt County. Since July 1st of 2021, investigators with the Street Crimes Squad have seized more than 25 illicit firearms and assisted with multiple investigations involving gang violence. As an example, they were instrumental in the arrest of several eight-tray gangster cribs who shot into the wrong house, shooting a young mother in the head and killing her, and shooting the child that was in her arms. Fortunately, that child survived. Differential pay. We're requesting $227,000 for night shift. This amount includes salary and benefits. Basically, the deputies would earn an additional 10% of their base pay when they work at night, and the night shift hours would consist of hours between 6:00 p.m. and 6:00 a.m. Law enforcement agencies throughout the country are experiencing high turnover rates. Agencies are spending a large amount of resources on recruiting and hiring new employees. In many cases, this is a losing proposition due to a reduction in the number of people seeking to work in this profession. Several of our deputies have left for private sector employment because of low pay and high stress. A lot of these employees are from the patrol division due to shift work amplifying an already high-stress work environment. I believe the night shift differential pay would help with employee morale and ultimately reduce the number of employees leaving this profession and leaving our agency. Many law enforcement agencies pay night shift differential. A few examples are East Carolina University Police Department pays differential pay, and Vitent Police Department pays differential pay as well. Accomplishments. Our unmanned aircraft system. On February 21st, 2022, you, the Board, the Pitt County Board of Commissioners, approved the purchase of two Skydio drones for the Pitt County Sheriff's Office. Since that time, five out of 11 pilots have earned their FAA Remote Pilot License and completed mandatory operation-specific training. Modifications are still being made to the UAS policy, but we expect this program to be fully operational by June 30th, 2022. One of the biggest benefits of our drone program will be the quicker location of lost children or the elderly who may be missing. We also plan to assist other agencies within Pitt County with emergency situations, such as Pitt County Emergency Management would be, we would be available to assist with any operations that they would have going on. With that, that will be the end of my presentation on this portion. If there are any questions?
Mr. Sheriff, I want to thank you for all that you do for the citizens of Pitt County. You mentioned the Civil Disturbance Team and the Crisis Negotiation Team. I'm wondering, could you tell me a little bit more about that Civil Disturbance Team, and how often are they utilized in Pitt County? I don't know how many times, or what do they do in terms of the negotiation team? Could you talk a little bit about that?
So the Civil Disturbance Teams are teams that we typically would use in protests. They are outfitted with certain equipment, such as shields, helmets, a certain body equipment, that enables them to be the frontline defense if protesters are trying to breach certain areas that they cannot go into. That's an example of how we would use our Civil Disturbance Team. The negotiations team, we use, they're specially trained and equipped with things like throw phones, say if a person is barricaded, we certainly want the best outcome in a situation like that. They utilize throw phones that they then throw into the scene so that we can establish a line of communication with that person in hopes to creating a conversation that gets that person to come out and not cause any further harm to anyone that they may have holding as hostages or harm upon themselves. They're very important specialized teams that receive the training in those areas, again, to hope for the best outcome of those situations. Most agencies, especially agencies our size, find value in utilizing those types of teams who specialize in that area.
Thank you.
You said they call, what kind of, grow, what? Grow phones?
Throw phones.
Oh!
Yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry.
So that we can establish communication.
Okay.
And have a direct line of communication with whoever we're dealing with.
A green dog?
No, green means a new dog that has not been trained in anything. So we purpose them. Sometimes they're dual-purposed, for drugs, for apprehension, could be two dual roles. But when we say green, we're talking about a dog that has not been purpose, they're new, young, haven't been purpose for anything. For example, For example, if you'll remember, I have the therapy dog, Drifter. Drifter is purposed solely for therapeutics. He's been utilized in the courtrooms. He's helped many victims of rape. He's helped victims to have the strength and courage to testify. He helps us as employees. Sometimes I bring him into, I even bring him here over to the building here. So, he travels the county. He visits a lot of retirement home schools. He attends a lot of events. And he's been, he has become the most popular deputy in the county. But that's what that means, greens, when they're young, haven't been purposed for anything.
I know green mean that same thing to people, but I was just curious.
Yes, ma'am.
Other questions?
Done.
Thank you. Proceed.
Okay. So, we'll move on to detention. All right. I want to talk about the inmate GED program. Very proud of this program, bringing us into the detention center. I strongly believe that if we don't give people the tools to be successful, then they go out and come back and just do the same things and come back over and over again. Currently, we have four current participants in this program, twenty-two referred participants, and we have served fourteen participants to date. The Detention Center offers eligible inmates the opportunity to begin working towards completing their high school diploma while awaiting trial. Enrollment in classes are facilitated by instructors from Pitt Community College. These instructors come into the detention center. We've actually have a classroom area. They come in, assess them, and then find out where their weaknesses are, and then work on those weaknesses so that they're able to eventually receive their GED. Five people have totally completed the GED program, to our knowledge. We are unable currently to do the tests at the facility for the inmates, but when they leave, they can go take the tests for their GED at a satellite site, normally at Pitt Community College. SARP, you all hear me talk about SARP a lot. Currently, we have nine current participants. We have served eighty-three participants. SARP referrals are received daily. Referrals are based on applications and requests. From day one of these programs, or when these programs were created, I did so with the intention not to compromise the security and safety of those officers at the detention center, or the dynamics of the makeup of bodies and detention officers that we have. The reclassification of any positions at the detention center causes me concern. That security will be compromised when we begin to fill the open positions at the detention center. SARP, which is the acronym for Sheriff Heron Addiction Recovery Program, is designed to help individuals with substance use orders. In addition, individuals will receive, or individuals will receive treatment during their stay at Pitt County Detention Center. SARP is a very intensive and demanding recovery program that not only addresses opioid-related disorders, but also concentrates on other substance abuse, or substance-related disorders, life skills, education, and positive thinking. And if I could take a moment to recognize a few of the people who have graduated from our SARP program that's here today, if you would stand, please. Tomorrow, I would hope that they will come back and will be able to give you a few minutes of their story and how this program has aided them in not returning to our detention center in an incarcerated manner. Hopefully, they come back and pour into the other people and tell them their story as well. Where? Where is the Women's Empowerment and Recovery Program? Because I recognize that typically the population is male, but we do have women that enter our detention center. And typically, women will have not only the same issues, but a trauma-based circumstances that has brought them there in the first place. So, there's a little bit more that we do to deal with that trauma-based issue as it relates to the programs and counseling. The Women's Empowerment and Recovery Program offers essential crisis intervention, women's empowerment, mental health counseling, substance use individual and group, and reinforces positive attitudes that allow these participants to establish a pathway to sobriety. We also now have MATS, which is the Medically Assisted Treatment Program. We currently have twenty-five participants. We have four pending participants. We've served two hundred and seventeen participants. MAT referrals are done daily. Referrals are based upon, or based on, application submission and request. The MAT program is designed to help address opioid use disorders. Individuals diagnosed with an opioid dependency are eligible to receive treatment that involves approved medication and ongoing therapy. Inmates requesting participation must be screened and assessed by detention medical staff and on-site substance use clinician. The type of medication offered for this treatment comes at the discretion of the prescribing medical professional. This service is an additional service offered by our on-site medical provider. We are the only county that offers that comprehensive, these comprehensive services, which includes the aforementioned services. The MAT program is going to be standard across the state. So, we are ahead of the curve. The revenue, if you look at the revenues here, county inmates, I won't read them all. You've received revenue of $47,000, seventy-six on state backlog, jail fees, $72,000, Meals on Wheels, $10,000. So, if you'll look at that, it's our commissary, $138,000. And federal inmate, we are at $879,000 projected revenues. It's based off thirty-five inmates. We will meet that projected revenue for this year. This is just, this figure is just up to date. Just to give you, tell you a little bit about the county inmates, things you may not be familiar with. County inmate is when we house other inmates from other counties. The backlog portion that we get are people who are scheduled to go to prison, but the commitment papers may not have been received, or the prisons are overpopulated, and the inmate is housed, when they're housed in our facility until they can go off to prison, the state reimburses us for every day, every day that the inmate stays beyond the commitment The SMCP is the Statewide Misdominant Confinement Program. Typically, that's where an inmate may have received a sentence less than six months, and instead of sending them off, we keep them and receive those funds for that. The next slide is just showing you the federal inmate revenue that we've received in the past from 2018 up until today. And again, this is the revenues that's been received up to February of 2022. Again, we are projected to meet the projected revenue based off of thirty-five inmates, federal inmates in the detention center. New budget request. So, I want to talk about the program's director, the social worker, who are now currently in grant positions, the detention officer for medical. Overtime, household supplies, and linen, trainings, and conferences. Our program's director is currently funded by a grant and is occupied by Jason Jackson. Jason oversees all of the programs, including the programs that these men were in. He's responsible for developing, coordinating, and administrating ongoing activities for the sheriff's office and detention center, creation of necessary screenings and assessment tools for offenders. The program director supervises the social worker in the jail and system navigator positions that are directly tied to all of these programs. The program's director also supervises and monitors all student interns, volunteers, and contract workers that participate with these programs. The program's director leads group sessions with inmate population who are participating in these specialized programs. Other duties of the program director are, but not limited to, organizing and facilitating community stakeholder meetings and providing information to all in attendance, set up and organize events involving community healthcare providers, volunteer services, collegiate universities, and other law enforcement agencies, and all community services in partnership with the Pitt County Sheriff's Office. He manages program staff through trainings, orientations, and staff development, interviews interested inmates, conducts in-depth reviews of inmate records to ensure qualifications into the programs, investigate inmate complaints about the issues with the program. This program's director is very integral in making these programs work. The social worker. She is currently Kiara Clemens, and she's currently funded by a grant. She provides intensive social work services with the use of social work practice skills and intervention techniques, provides in-depth assessment of individuals and family dynamic needs, provides intervention and treatment planning. The social worker interviews offenders, reviews records, and compiles social summary reports. Rights reports, collect and correlate dead data as needed, and conduct group psychoeducation Detention officer medical. This position programs requiring additional staff support to get patients seen. NCCHS standards requiring additional movements of patients to internal interview and meetings meets the demand of healthcare provider, mental health provider, and counseling. Every single inmate is required to undergo a mental health assessment within fourteen days of admission. The intent of this standard is that every inmate is assessed for intellectual functioning, substance use disorders, and mental health illness, and that the inmate with positive findings are evaluated by qualified mental health professionals. Inmates are then treated by qualified mental health professionals in regularly scheduled appointments with frequency and duration of appointments determined by the mental health needs of the inmate population. Some, especially vulnerable inmates, may need additional assessments to detect and triage mental health status changes. There are approximately three hundred visits per month from mental health visits alone. This does not include the regular screenings that inmates must have and the regular medical visits. So, this is why it is imperative that we have this position that is provided to us to be able to move these inmates to their, to get them to their appointments for mental health screenings and for their regular medical screenings. Required overtime for roll call, shift change, that equates to two point two five hours per officer, four hours per sergeant, and six hours per lieutenant per pay period. Overtime is also required to cover vacations, FMLA, shift shortages, hospital stays, sick absences, and other unforeseen situations. These shortages matter in our facility. We are required to have a standard number of officers on duty in order to stay in compliance with the state law on staffing requirements. Just to give you an example of that, our staffing should be at thirty-two detention officers per shift. A minimum, at minimum, it would have to be twenty-eight to ensure safety of our officers and our inmates in the detention center. With the shortages that we're having, we're having to have people work overtime to meet that compliance so that our officers are safe. I want to remind you that this facility was built, the detention center, was built in 1993. And at that time, we did a mass hiring. And guess what? It's thirty years later, and guess what people are doing? They're retiring. And so, I'm having a lot of people who are at that ability to retire, and that brings in some of the shortages that we're having in the detention center. I can fill two positions today, and next week, I've got two people who's retired. And that's what I'm facing. And it puts us right back to square one. Again, we are required to have a minimum number of staff per shift, per block, per Household supplies and linens. We're constantly replacing worn, ripped mattresses as state inspections requires them to be at least four inches thick and in fair conditions per standards. Safety and liability issues arise when mattresses are not in fair condition. Inmates will try to stash contraband, weapons, and other items in the worn and ripped mattresses. And the cost of replacing these have increased. We must have those mattresses replaced, again, for the safety and security of the folks that work in our detention center as well. And state requires that they be in good order. Training and conferences. Improper training leads to safety and liability issues. We've just talked about people retiring. Older officers have retired, and the new officers lack the training and the knowledge gained by the older officers who have now left. State requires each officer to obtain a certain number of hours each year to continue to be in compliance. So, we really need that, the ability to be able to provide training for these officers and send them to training. Salary adjustments. We're requesting, again, a ten percent shift differential for all our officers that are required to work shift work. Again, local agencies like ECU and Invitant currently offer shift differential to all of their officers that work shift work. It increases workplace morale and decrease our turnover rate. Local counties, other local counties, such as Lenore County, currently offer shift differential to all officers that are required to work shift work. Local counties, other local counties such as Lenore County currently offer shift differential to all officers that are required to work shift work. The maintenance team continues to save thousands of dollars a year. Additional educational programs delivered to, and these are just some of the upward trends, the maintenance team of course being one of them. Additional educational programs delivered to inmates at little to no cost. Tablets are being used by inmates. Inmates that are unable to attend in-person learning can use these tablets to obtain course information and receive credit for the class. We have six hundred and eighty-nine learners, these are just some numbers. Six hundred and eighty-nine learners, that means that six hundred and eighty-nine inmates access a educational course on that tablet. And they've received nine hundred and sixty thousand credits earned and they get credits when they take these educational classes. And these could be educational classes on soft skills. You know, how to interact with a supervisor or how to, I mean, I'm just naming some things, but it's just soft skills typically. And there have been ninety-two, over ninety-two thousand courses completed on these tablets. These are pathways to learning offered by Paytail on these inmate tablets. Other upward trends, detention K nine, Freya, Officer Bates. Freya is another canine that is purpose for drugs. It's a way to make sure that there are not illicit drugs coming into the detention center. So, in the past fiscal year, the detention K nine team has had the following utilizations. K nine presence had an immediate calming effect on inmates. No force use. Found contraband four times. Assisted the special operations unit of the Pitt County Sheriff's Office one time. Deter future activity, control flow of contraband, increase safety and security of facility a hundred and seventeen times is how we've used him. And as an example, we had a vendor who frequents our detention center. And they employ people themselves and we kind of try to vet them as well on the back end. But they had an employee who we suspect was bringing in drugs. Upon further investigation, there were, I believe eighty or ninety contacts she had made by text messages. Because these tablets you can text on, you have to pay for it when the inmates use them. They have to pay, I think, fifty cents to send a text. But she's had communication with about eighty of our inmates. We suspect probably making the order. So what we do now is Freya, our canine dog, now is at the entry of when this commissary is being brought in to make sure that there is no detection of illegal substances coming into our detention center. So, Freya has been a very valuable tool for us as well to make sure that we're keeping our detention center as safe as possible. With that having been said, if there are any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer.
Thank you Sheriff. Before we have questions, could you introduce the folks on your team that are here?
Absolutely, I can. Thank you for that. Right here we have Chief Deputy Congleton, he's in charge of our investigative unit. Chief, Lemuel Capehart is the chief of detention. He runs that detention facility, brings thirty years of experience. Invaluable. He could be retired, but he's one of those retired people who stuck with me to make sure that we are grooming the next group of leaders appropriately. So I appreciate him for that. Keisha Rouse is our financial, she does what Ernest does on my side of the house, she does on the detention side of the house. She keeps up with budgets. We have Captain Abbott, who is the captain of patrol, the patrol division. Brings a lot of, you can tell by the gray hair, he brings a lot of experience. We have Lieutenant Golly, one of the lieutenants on patrol. He runs one of our patrol shifts. And then we have Chief John Guard. He runs the, or he's in charge of the patrol division in other areas. I have those two chief deputies on this side of the house because I didn't want a favorite child. Sometimes you get a, you get a chief deputy and you have one and they have a favorite child. I figured if I split it right down to half, everybody's going to be the favorite child. So every unit is looked out for. So these are the people that have come here to support and of course Ernest, who's my money guy, is what I call him. Who takes care of our side of the house of the financial and the budgets.
Good. And thank you, thank you all and especially for your innovations in preventive and corrective programs that go beyond what the badge requires. I think that's outstanding. Thank you. Do we have questions?
Yes, I do. Sheriff, back to the GED program. Why aren't you able to give the tests after they complete it?
They have to, that's Pitt Community College, that's a Pitt Community College. I guess they, I would assume they have to have certain measures in place that they just can't do it at the detention center. That would probably be better a question for Pitt Community College while they won't do the, administer the test itself there. I'm sure some kind of control mechanism for people taking the test. We don't have anything to do with that. If we could give it there, we'd give it there, but that's not us. Thank you.
Other questions? Now, manager, oh, you had a question?
Who you talking about, me?
Oh, I thought I heard someone down that way.
Oh yeah, I was getting ready to, ah. When people from over a period of time, it was a thought of mine, I don't know where I got it from, maybe through my education in the various courses, is that when people go to prison or jail, there are rep to, something to keep them from having to go back. And the prison system seemingly hasn't met that thought that's put out in the universe that they receive certain kind of things that go back. Now, these programs that you're talking about. Is that why you got them going to sort of help them stay out?
Yes ma'am. So I know that as Sheriff, my statutory duties and main requirement is the enforcement of law. And I do that. But I have to look at ways to also reduce recidivism from people continuing to come back into our detention center. I think that if we give people the tools that they need to keep them from coming back. Now, it's up to them to use them, but when the jail opens now and they leave, they've got tools in their toolbox that could help them become successful because we've utilized the time inside of the detention center to provide them those tools. Some people who come into our detention center, if you think about their growing up and their environment, they were never given, not all, but they were never given boundaries or told that they can be successful. I truly believe that you are who people tell you you are. And if people tell you, you're a criminal, what are you going to think? I'm a criminal, I'm a criminal, I'm a criminal, so let me be the best criminal I can be. We give them a different mindset and we tell them that they can be successful. And that now they think, I can be successful, somebody believes in me. And those are the tools that we give them to be successful. It reduces recidivism. You, one of the young men here, I don't want to tell his story as it's tale, used to break in the houses. He's been clean for three years. He has not committed a crime. He has a job, actually, I'll let him tell you this tomorrow, I'm sorry. Actually, has become the director of the job that he's in successfully. So, now when the detention center opens, the doors open. Not only do they have that toolbox, but we've connected them with the resources within our community that pulls them the rest of the way. And so yes, it's about recidivism.
I've met some of them that been in. And I asked the pointed questions and why you keep going back to that place? And then I'm trying to see, on your side, are you providing?
What makes us unique from prisons is that jail is certainly different. People have not been convicted of a crime, they've only simply been accused of a crime. And so they haven't been convicted. And this is an opportunity to give people the tools who are more than likely going to re-enter into the community. And not only do we do that, we provide re-entry services to help them get housing. If they need a suit to go to a job interview, we help them get those things that makes them successful, I'm sorry, I was running, to make them successful. So absolutely, it's necessary. Absolutely it is.
They tell them why.
Other questions?
Thank you.
Mr. Sheriff, that re-entry program that you mentioned, I think that's very valid. And Pitt Community College, I think you're working with them as well.
Yeah, Pitt Community College actually provided us one of their re-entry resources that is geared towards women and helping them. And one of them is geared towards that. But then there are other re-entry sources, resources in the community that we also connect with and connect to people who are leaving our detention center with, which is just again, another tool. If we keep doing the same thing and putting the same thing in, we're going to continue to get the same thing out. We're doing something different. We're putting something different in, in hopes of not keep opening those doors and people keep coming back. Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation and for your work and congratulations to the young men that have finished the SHARP program. And thanks for coming out this morning. Good luck. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Vice Chair, if I may also let you know that although there is not a physical presentation today, you do have in your notebook a written presentation from the Convention and Visitors Bureau.
And in summary, for that one, we're not worried about that.
We're not.
And any comments about the sheriff's budget?
I will just maybe if you'd like me to pull you full circle on that budget.
Sure.
Based on the recommendation, we are recommending that the sheriff across all of her budgets receive a seven point eight nine percent increase this year over last year while maintaining the same tax rate. She will absorb the cost of an additional one million dollars to have her provider of choice in jail medical. It includes a four percent market adjustment for all positions including starting salary. And those positions that she talked about needing to be filled, my recommendation is that she look at those vacant positions and reclassify those. The programs that she has in the facility are, as you've said, innovative and producing terrific results within our community. And we certainly want to see them continue. But she has as of last week's count, thirty-eight vacant positions. Three of those thirty-eight vacant positions were positions that this board approved as new positions last year, two in detention and one in sheriff, that have yet to be advertised or filled at all, but are fully funded.
Why is that so? Why is that so?
I'm not sure. I'm not sure. But what I do see as not perpetuating that problem is to perhaps take those two detention positions that were approved last year and never advertised or filled, reclassify those to these grant program positions and there will not be any compromise to the current or existing safety within the jail. I completely concur that I wouldn't want to take away a position that would then compromise safety in exchange for another. But as manager, I do believe there's capacity within the existing vacancies to cover everything that she is asking for without increasing your headcount or raising the tax rate. May I also add, outside of this budget, Monday evening, you also approved six hundred and fifty thousand dollars in sheriff's vehicles exclusively for the sheriff. That's in addition to the six hundred and some thousand dollars in the proposed budget that will also provide vehicles to the sheriff. Monday evening, you pulled one point eight million dollars out of ARPA funds to cover law enforcement radios in addition to what's currently in your budget for law enforcement radios. And we've completely absorbed within this budget, the cost of that jail medical. So we have some really exciting things going on in our sheriff's office. I believe the recommended budget as proposed meets those needs with continued room to grow.
Well, I do know that having been a state employee for most of my adult life, the university does pay shift differential pay to all of its employees who are affected by, when you go beyond the normal work day. We do, we did get shift differential pay for work, like going into the night and going in on Sunday and Saturday and that sort of thing as a professional staff member. I didn't, I heard it today that they didn't get that. So, but I just thought every state employee got it. I mean, that was my own personal assumption, not that it was something that I was told. But I just assumed that every state employees in the state of North Carolina who's a state employee gets shifted. And apparently that's not the case. And I, did you know that?
Thank you. And I think, manager, you had a response.
Yeah, and if you want, we did think, we did consider very carefully and had multiple conversations about adding a level of differential pay in the sheriff's office. A couple of issues with differential pay kind of rose to the surface. One is we don't yet have a program in place. We don't yet know that among our existing staff, we have people who will want to work permanent night shifts. And so the sheriff, in discussing differential pay with her during her budget conversations, has yet to develop a program to assure that if we fund differential pay, that she'll be able to effectively roll it out. What I've asked her to do is develop the program first, show me how it will work and then let me consider that funding, even if that happens to be mid-year. The other thing about differential pay is currently we don't have a day shift and a night shift permanently. They do swing shifts in the sheriff's office. So they work one set of days and then they switch to nights and then they switch to days and then they switch to nights. So you don't have a group of people that are working an undesirable shift alone. What they have is a pay set for that position that includes days and nights and they swing back and forth within.
That's sort of how we did it at the university, when you're in those kind of positions.
Differential pay can be applied to swing shifts. It is more commonly applied to attract people to a permanent night shift. In talking with folks who are on the patrol side, they don't want necessarily permanent night shifts because when you're investigating a case, you need daytime hours to reach out to the people that you're investigating. Right? So if you had somebody who was totally on a night shift, they wouldn't be able to accomplish what needs to be accomplished because they interact with people in the day. But they'd be getting paid more than those who would be working all day long, covering what couldn't happen during the night. So I don't know that I see differential pay, so much so on the patrol side. I do see it more viable on the detention center side. And I've asked the sheriff to look into that further and develop a program before we fund it. What I don't want to do is fund ideas that then aren't spent or carried out and then that money falls back to something that you didn't intend. I want to see a more developed program first and then I want to follow that.
Then you know what you're paying for.
I know what I'm paying for and I know what it goes to. I also fully respect and would be remiss if I said that my thoughts on differential pay and swing shifts mean a hill of beans. I don't operate the sheriff's office. That is solely and totally within the sheriff's discretion. And so it's not up to me to decide whether differential pay is a good idea or not a good idea. It's up to me to decide whether or not it is wise to recommend that you dedicate dollars to a program that doesn't currently exist. And so my recommendation is not yet.
Thank you. Commissioner Nunn.
Wanted to, on the CVB, just a good news item. This week, I believe we had our management team and some of the other commissioners there. We heard good news from the, as a part of the travel and tourism week, that North Carolina is coming back strong, Pitt County is coming back strong. Of course, the CVB is funded in large part by occupancy taxes. But, you know, the state of North Carolina- of North Carolina, I think the hope was that we would be able to, you know, chart a really prudent path forward and then have a really strong recovery. Looks like that's playing out. So I think that's just really good news for this board and for this area and for this region. I just wanted to share that. I sent a budget packet.
Thank you for that report. Thank you.
I have a question to ask the manager in talking about differential pay. Would that be a question for some other department?
So, so if I'm understanding your question, differential pay could just as well be applied in the communication center. It could just as well be applied with EMS providers. Differential pay is something that if we applied, that would have applicability in more than just the sheriff's department.
That's what I wanted to raise that concern.
Yes.
So if, so if you don't have it, have a program in place yet, we would need to have, to be looking at the total body, I mean, county, when we look at that.
Yes, and from an administrative perspective, it is very cumbersome to take a position that has a set pay grade and pay certain weeks at a different rate than other weeks. What I would rather see is a position that has swing shifts, roll that into its overall pay, right? It doesn't mean that you have to have a higher paycheck the week that you're working nights and a lower paycheck the week that you're working days. You just want to be sure that you're fairly compensated for a position that includes nights. I think we are working toward that with this 4% pay bump, plus the merit, plus certifications. And so I'm not sure that if it isn't a permanent position that you need to retain to attract for nights, that it makes sense.
Okay. Also, speak to the talk about comparing Greenville with county positions.
Okay, the city of Greenville, Greenville Utilities Commission, they have always, for as long as I can remember, had higher rates of salary than we have in county government. We have very different responsibilities, very different positions. I don't think you can answer, you can compare them apples to apples. And what we do through our human resources department is a market comparison every year with counties of comparable size and value to be sure that our positions are within 5% in line, and we make adjustments when we're out of whack. And so comparing just to the city of Greenville is not a fair comparison, and it's not a comparison that we apply countywide. We look at comparable counties, not just the city of Greenville. If we were going to match city of Greenville salaries or Greenville Utility Commission salaries, or even their health insurance premium rates, we just couldn't afford it. Everybody in the county who had a similar position would have a significant pay bump. None of us make what the city makes, and we're not going to buy our way out of that problem. What we can do is take pride in what Pitt County uniquely does. We can create an environment that we all love coming to that makes up for that differential. I will also say the city is structured very differently. Everybody in the city answers directly to a manager and does what she says. She's in charge. She controls the hiring, the firing, the operation, and the money. None of these folks within the county that we're talking about answer to me. It's a very different structure. They answer to a separately elected official whose entire unit is funded by the county, and then she, within the confines of her budget, determines how best to allocate and spend that money based upon her needs. So comparing to the city not only goes against longstanding tradition, it's comparing apples to oranges. The city is not structured the way the county is structured. And so it by itself is not, I would say, a, a comparison that should carry the day.
Right, because the GUC really gives the city a big chunk of money.
I, I would commend our manager and staff for that close look at vacant positions. I think that's a really important move in terms of how we're developing a budget that we can live with, and it's been a terrific budget to look at. Yes, and piggybacking on what you just said, in, in terms of, Janet, as you mentioned, the reclassification of, of, of vacant position that the sheriff had, is that, is that, do they understand, the sheriff or the department understand the reclassification, what that means? Are there any pros and cons? It sounds like, I, I think I like, I like the idea of it, utilizing those vacant, by reclassifying, but is it as simple as that? Is there any cons and negatives in that? Can it be done just that easy?
So I will answer that a couple ways. The first part of your question is, yes, the sheriff understands it, and the sheriff reclassifies positions all the time.
Right.
It happens all the time. The sheriff's attorney position was a position that she reclassified. The sheriff's attorney's legal assistant is a position that she reclassified. The sheriff fully understands the reclassification process and knows how that works. In terms of how easy it is, I would say the only barrier is if we're going to have a financial impact. That can make it more difficult because we can't reclassify $30,000 position into a $70,000 position and think that's going to work. But we have in the sheriff's office, as of today, 38 positions to work from, and the positions that she's recommending, in what I've looked at in what's vacant, are fairly comparable. And so in terms of the process, it's created job description for the position you want, and because this is not Office of State Human Resources, we don't even have that extra level of review. I review it, I sign off on it, and it's done. And then, and then Brian assures that there's no negative impact, and we work with human resources. It's a fairly simple position. And I'll actually say that the, the sheriff herself is, I appreciate the conversations we've had, and she's the one who actually first sparked my mind to think about reclassification for these parts of positions, because she had talked to me about a confidential situation where she might potentially be able to provide some law enforcement to a municipality. And she said, "Can I add to that headcount if a contract, that fully loaded cost of that position?" And I thought about it, and I said, "Well, sure, if the contract is covering the fully loaded cost of that position, sure, you can add that person in, and it's, and that cost is covered. But if the contract isn't there, then that position wouldn't be there, similar to a grant." And she said to me, "Oh, that's no problem. I'd roll it into, into a vacant position." I thought, "Okay, great. This is something I need to look into further." And then, so I really started looking at all these vacant positions and what's been filled and how long has it had been vacant. And when we operate a county government where the majority of our costs are based on people, right, we operate very lean in terms of operations and supplies. Most of our cost is people, that if as a manager, I'm going to make any dent or progress within this budget, we have to look at people costs. And I want to do that in a way that doesn't hurt the folks who are currently in their positions and actually inspires the folks who are in their positions to do even better. So I think a hard look at these vacant positions is where we have the capacity to make an impact, because we run so tight in other areas. Long answer to say, the sheriff is fully aware of the reclassification process, and it's very easy to do. I'm not aware of any cons unless you're seeking to reclassify one that isn't in the same position, which is why your community gardener position, for example, there were no vacant positions within that division that could swap. So I'm asking in this recommended budget that we add to the headcount, that three-quarter time position, because there isn't capacity to swap. But when you look at sheriff, DSS, and health, and you look at, as of my last Friday's count, 34 vacant positions in public health, 46 vacant positions in DSS, and 38 vacant positions in the sheriff's office, many of them that have been vacant for a significant period of time, I think you've got room to move. And I also have assured each of our department heads that if these vacant positions are full and there is a need, that we will continue to work together. If you tell me that I have no capacity to do this because my, I don't have any vacancies and I have a critical need for this particular position, let's talk about it. We're about solutions. We're about making things happen that are ripe for Pitt County Government.
Good question. Thank you.
Another question I have. I, I know the sheriff, you know, we're county, so we cover the whole county, but she talked about assisting municipalities, the Dogwood Festival, the Chad Festival, the Collar Festival. So each one of those, you know, got officers or some kind of, you know. So should that be, is there some kind of assistance as far as from those municipalities to?
Absolutely. I'm not aware of any services that the sheriff necessarily provides to others for free. And I would say we have a sheriff's contract rate in every one of those. For example, the deputies that, that assist in your night meetings, county manager's office pays a contract rate for those deputies to be here. It's not within their normal duties. If they go to any festival, there's a contract rate that gets paid. And I think that wording matters. I wouldn't call them revenues, I would call them reimbursements in each one of those categories. We're not making revenue from a federal inmate program. We're reimbursing the costs to carry that out. We're not making revenue when we go to the Chad Festival. We're reimbursing the overtime cost for that officer to be there because we're paying his regular pay, which is budgeted. We've also budgeted overtime, and now we're drawing in revenue to offset that overtime. And the rate that we pay, that the sheriff charges, is a fully loaded cost that would include a overtime rate, so that it's included within that. And so it just, these are reimbursements for services provided that pay for the service that's provided. It's not revenue in addition.
Yeah, and it's, it's not free service?
No, there's no free service, but it's service that she elects to offer to provide at a cost. It's not something she has to do. So as a community partner, she's willing to say, "I can offer my people at this rate and be your partner."
Yeah, and which is good.
Well, in, in that situation, you have a lot of other people, when they talk about all these festivals and stuff, a lot of other people coming from other places that these towns are going to need, I can understand, they're going to need extra because you've got folks from all over, whatever, who is certified to handle certain kind of criminal type activity. That's the way I look at that, and.
Exactly, and those towns are willing to pay for the sheriff's service for assistance.
Thank you. Other questions? Comments? I have had some conversation with manager and, and staff and some of y'all also about, you remember the five nonprofits that we had brought us from Senator Davis, and we got money from the state to try to resolve that circumstance? And I believe, I'll try to summarize this, and maybe manager can, can help me. I believe that three of the five wound up being qualified for the funds, and two for reasons of the uses, proposed uses of the funds were not something that we felt legally that we could fund. And so I'm trying to, to get us to move forward with the three and possibly in this year's budget, or the suggestion to find a way, perhaps our finance officer could weigh in on this in just a moment. But am I characterizing this fairly accurately?
Yes, and in my discussions with Vice Chair Albright, we, I had suggested that if it is the consensus of the board, that we can add as an item for consent to your June 6th agenda, funding for those three that were otherwise public purpose eligible. The two that were not were Lost Sheep and Northern Pitt.
And those projects were not public.
Purpose.
Purposed, and so that was the reason that we had legal issues. And so the hope is that we could go ahead and fund the three that, that were approved legally.
So do you need, just need?
We're just looking for consensus to go ahead with that, and I, I think at the June 7th meeting?
Yeah, June 6th, Monday, June 6th, as an item for consent, if it is the consensus of the board to do so.
Is that okay?
Yeah.
Yes.
So I think our next step is to come back and hear public comment on the budget. Did you have a comment?
No, there was just some discussion. I think the manager agrees. I think I saw consensus as long as there's.
Yes, okay. So, thank you. So we did get consensus then, we're agreeing.
Yes, yes.
We have consensus that we got consensus. Okay, good. Thank you.
Do we have any sense?
Well, this has been a very productive week, and again, we appreciate so much, manager and financial staff for getting us to this point with no new taxes and with everyone getting pretty much what they're wanting in the budget. So I think we're ready for a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Yes, thank you, ma'am. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, okay. It's been moved and properly seconded that we adjourn the budget workshops. Please vote.
Very good meeting, Mr. Chairman.
Very good meeting, Mr. Chairman. Did a good job.
Mr. Vice.
Good, thank you all. We'll get Chris standing for you.